From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Excuse me. Good morning and welcome to the regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Today's Tuesday, May 21st. Board to reconvene. The first item is roll call.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. The next item is the flag salute. It's going to be led this morning by Supervisor Perez and please remain standing at the conclusion of that for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Thank you Chairman. Please stand. Salute and pledge.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. I'm going to tell you what's on the consent agenda in just a moment, but I want to give you a little heads up about how we're going to handle the meeting today. At the conclusion of the consent agenda, or actually at the conclusion of the ceremonials, which will be right after the consent agenda, I'm going to take item 29 out of order. There's a lot of you here today and I know that you maybe don't want to sit through the entire meeting, so we're going to take 29 before we move on. First item though is the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA or a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. We can act on those all in one motion. If any member of the public would like to remove any of those items for separate consideration, the board member has to do that, but now is the time to request that. Or if you'd just like to make a comment on any item on the consent agenda, now is the time to do that. Anyone here like to do, either ask for removal for separate consideration? I'm sorry. Read the consent agenda items. Starts on page two. Items one and two, five through nine. Onto page three. Items 12 through 17. Onto page four. All the items 18 through 25. Page five. Items 26, 27, and then 30 through 33. Page six. All the items 34 through 41. Page seven. Items 43 through 49. And page eight. Items 50 through 52. If you'd like an agenda, by the way, they are in the back on the tables near the door. Anyone here want to make any comment on any of the items on the consent agenda or remove any of those items for separate consideration? Seeing now, I'll return it to the board for a motion on consent.
Motion on consent.
I'll second that motion and I would like to acknowledge that item number nine, we're reappointing Jeremy Price as the second district member to the Civil Service Commission. I know he's in the audience. Mr. Price, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. You have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you. The next item is item three under the Resolutions and Proclamations portion of the meeting on page two. It will proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. It will be presented by Supervisor Maggert.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
How are you, Jeremy? Got a whole crib right? Yeah? Morning. Hi, good morning.
Hi. Hi. Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Hi. Hi. Good morning.
Colleagues, it's my pleasure today to come before you to proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. Across our country, more than 1,000 community action agencies serve the poor and those who are in need across our entire country. It was originally founded in May of 1965 and currently our local CAP-K, Community Action Partnership of Kern, employs more than 900 people and it improves the lives of more than 100,000 Kern County residents. I am honored and pleased to... Where'd Jeremy go? Sneaky, ain't ya? I am honored and pleased to represent our board on the Community Action Partnership of Kern Board of Directors. It is my pleasure to do that and so I enjoy serving with all of these good people and the wonderful staff that we have there. So, this is Jeremy Tobias. He is the Executive Director of the Community Action Partnership of Kern and I'd like to read this proclamation and then have you tell us a little bit more unless I read your notes just now. If I did, I apologize for that. Okay, good. So, this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern on behalf of the State of California. We have officially proclaimed May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. It's been entered into our minutes by the signature of our Chairman, the Honorable David Couch, here on the 21st day of May 2019. Thank you for your leadership, for what you do for us, and please tell us a little bit more about what's going to happen this month.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman and fellow board members. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern. Community Action Partnership of Kern is one of 1,000-plus community action agencies nationwide. This month, we're celebrating the impact that this network of agencies makes to fight poverty that children and families face on a daily basis. We do this because nearly one-third of Kern County's children live in poverty. 25% of Kern County children are food insecure. The residents of more than 8,000 homes in Kern County have trouble paying their utility bills. 1,300 people need a bridge between their life on the streets and a home. The parents of more than 4,000 children need assistance with preschool education for their children that can lift them to long-term educational success. Our mission at CAP-K is to provide and advocate for resources that will empower members of the communities we serve to be self-sufficient. We build steps that help more than 100,000 Kern County residents climb out of poverty and begin giving back to the economic and the social well-being of their communities. Our 15 governing board members, which I have several behind me, including Board Member Maggert, and hundreds of employees are committed to changing the circumstances of those we serve and elevating the future of all of us here in Kern County. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Maybe we need to take two rows. Guys, get up here in the middle.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do and thank you for being here today. Next item is item four. It proclaims June 7th, 2019 as the Sixth Annual Family Reunification Day in Kern County and it will be presented by Supervisor Perez.
Thank you Chairman. A motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes. The motion is approved. All eyes.
How are you, Jeremy? Got a whole crib right? Yeah? Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Hi. Hi. Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Colleagues, it's my pleasure today to come before you to proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. Across our country, more than 1,000 community action agencies serve the poor and those who are in need across our entire country. It was originally founded in May of 1965 and currently our local CAP-K, Community Action Partnership of Kern, employs more than 900 people and it improves the lives of more than 100,000 Kern County residents. I am honored and pleased to... Where'd Jeremy go? Come up here. Sneaky, ain't ya? I am honored and pleased to represent our board on the Community Action Partnership of Kern Board of Directors. It is my pleasure to do that and so I enjoy serving with all of these good people and the wonderful staff that we have there. So, this is Jeremy Tobias. He is the Executive Director of the Community Action Partnership of Kern and I'd like to read this proclamation and then have you tell us a little bit more unless I read your notes just now. If I did, I apologize for that. Okay, good. So, this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern on behalf of the State of California. We have officially proclaimed May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. It's been entered into our minutes by the signature of our Chairman, the Honorable David Couch, here on the 21st day of May 2019. Thank you for your leadership, for what you do for us, and please tell us a little bit more about what's going to happen this month.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman and fellow board members. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern. Community Action Partnership of Kern is one of 1,000-plus community action agencies nationwide. This month, we're celebrating the impact that this network of agencies makes to fight poverty that children and families face on a daily basis. We do this because nearly one-third of Kern County's children live in poverty. 25% of Kern County children are food insecure. The residents of more than 8,000 homes in Kern County have trouble paying their utility bills. 1,300 people need a bridge between their life on the streets and a home. The parents of more than 4,000 children need assistance with preschool education for their children that can lift them to long-term educational success. Our mission at CAP-K is to provide and advocate for resources that will empower members of the communities we serve to be self-sufficient. We build steps that help more than 100,000 Kern County residents climb out of poverty and begin giving back to the economic and the social well-being of their communities. Our 15 governing board members, which I have several behind me, including Board Member Maggert, and hundreds of employees are committed to changing the circumstances of those we serve and elevating the future of all of us here in Kern County. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Maybe we need to take two rows. Guys, get up here in the middle.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do and thank you for being here today. Next item is item four. It proclaims June 7th, 2019 as the Sixth Annual Family Reunification Day in Kern County and it will be presented by Supervisor Perez.
Thank you Chairman. A motion on proclamation.
Second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
It's been a little while.
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Excuse me. Good morning and welcome to the regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Today's Tuesday, May 21st. Board to reconvene. The first item is roll call.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. The next item is the flag salute. It's going to be led this morning by Supervisor Perez, and please remain standing at the conclusion of that for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Thank you, Chairman. Please stand. Salute and pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. I'm going to tell you what's on the consent agenda in just a moment, but I want to give you a little heads up about how we're going to handle the meeting today. At the conclusion of the consent agenda, or actually at the conclusion of the ceremonials, which will be right after the consent agenda, I'm going to take item 29 out of order. There's a lot of you here today, and I know that you maybe don't want to sit through the entire meeting, so we're going to take 29 before we move on. First item though is the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA or a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. We can act on those all in one motion. If any member of the public would like to remove any of those items for separate consideration, a board member has to do that, but now is the time to request that. Or if you'd just like to make a comment on any item on the consent agenda, now is the time to do that. Anyone here like to do, either ask for removal for separate consideration? I'm sorry, read the consent agenda items. Starts on page two, items one and two, five through nine. Onto page three, items 12 through 17. Onto page four, all the items 18 through 25. Page five, items 26, 27, and then 30 through 33. Page six, all the items 34 through 41. Page seven, items 43 through 49. And page eight, items 50 through 52. If you'd like an agenda, by the way, they are in the back on the tables near the door. Anyone here want to make any comment on any of the items on the consent agenda or remove any of those items for separate consideration? Seeing now, I'll return it to the board for a motion on consent.
Motion on consent.
I'll second that motion, and I would like to acknowledge that item number nine, we're reappointing Jeremy Price as the second district member to the Civil Service Commission. I know he's in the audience. Mr. Price, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. You have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. The next item is item three, under the Resolutions and Proclamations portion of the meeting on page two. It will proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. It'll be presented by Supervisor Maggert.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Colleagues, it's my pleasure today to come before you to proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. Across our country, more than 1,000 community action agencies serve the poor and those who are in need across our entire country. It was originally founded in May of 1965, and currently, our local CAP-K, Community Action Partnership of Kern, employs more than 900 people, and it improves the lives of more than 100,000 Kern County residents. I am honored and pleased to, where'd Jeremy go? Sneaky, ain't ya? I am honored and pleased to represent our board on the Community Action Partnership of Kern Board of Directors. It is my pleasure to do that, and so I enjoy serving with all of these good people and the wonderful staff that we have there. So, this is Jeremy Tobias. He is the executive director of the Community Action Partnership of Kern, and I'd like to read this proclamation and then have you tell us a little bit more unless I read your notes just now. If I did, I apologize for that. Okay, good. So this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern on behalf of the State of California. We have officially proclaimed May 2019 as Community Action Month in Kern County. It's been entered into our minutes by the signature of our chairman, the Honorable David Couch, here on the 21st day of May 2019. Thank you for your leadership, for what you do for us, and please tell us a little bit more about what's going to happen this month. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman and fellow board members. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern. Community Action Partnership of Kern is one of 1,000-plus community action agencies nationwide. This month, we're celebrating the impact that this network of agencies makes to fight poverty that children and families face on a daily basis. We do this because nearly one-third of Kern County's children live in poverty. 25% of Kern County children are food insecure. The residents of more than 8,000 homes in Kern County have trouble paying their utility bills. 1,300 people need a bridge between their life on the streets and a home. The parents of more than 4,000 children need assistance with preschool education for their children that can lift them to long-term educational success. Our mission at CAP-K is to provide and advocate for resources that will empower members of the communities we serve to be self-sufficient. We build steps that help more than 100,000 Kern County residents climb out of poverty and begin giving back to the economic and the social well-being of their communities. Our 15 governing board members, which I have several behind me, including Board Member Maggert, and hundreds of employees, are committed to changing the circumstances of those we serve and elevating the future of all of us here in Kern County. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do and thank you for being here today. Next item is item four. It proclaims June 7th, 2019, as the Sixth Annual Family Reunification Day in Kern County, and it will be presented by Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. A motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
It's been a little while. Honorable Chairman and colleagues, I am proud to stand before you today to proclaim June 7, 2019, as the Sixth Annual Family Reunification Day in Kern County. On this day, our County Department of Human Services, in partnership with the Superior Court, Henrietta Wile, Child Guidance Clinic, CASA, and many others, will celebrate the families who have been reunited with their children and honor the parents who have worked diligently to take the necessary steps in order to create a loving and safe environment for their children. As most of you know, thousands of children pass through Kern County's foster care program every year. Thousands. These children range in age from as early as a few days old to the day they turn 18. Many of these children have overcome incredible adversities, including severe poverty, homelessness, neglect, and abuse. On top of all of this, these children also fall victim to the incredible trauma associated with being separated from their families. I would like to thank Director Dina Murphy and all the staff from the DHS, in particular social workers who work tirelessly every day to help these families through some of the darkest times in their lives. I cannot thank you enough for what you do to better our community, and it is my honor to present you this proclamation. May we continue to reunite families and always make the health and happiness of these children our first priority. Thank you. Dina? Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California officially proclaims June 7, 2019, as Family Reunification Day in Kern County. It's been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Supervisor David Couch, on this May 21st, 2019.
Floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Perez. Thank you, Chairman Couch, and members of the board for proclaiming June 7th as Family Reunification Day in Kern County and allowing us to celebrate and honor the parents, two of which are behind me, and will share their story momentarily. But also joining me today is Judge, my colleague Judge Ramonda Marquez, and she will speak and conclude our comments after the two families have briefly shared their stories. Reunification is always the first goal of the Department of Human Services when we work with the families who have been impacted by having their children removed due to abuse or neglect or some unique circumstance. In Kern County, there are approximately 2,000 that are dependents in the foster care system at this time. As Supervisor Perez said, they've come into custody through no fault of their own, and I think I've got a little child running up behind me stealing the show, don't I? Yes, I do. Well, and we're just going to celebrate these families who've overcome the barriers, and I think you'll be very, very pleased to hear the story of Jerome, who is going to look familiar to you because he was here last year with little Tia, who was very shy and looked into the microphone and said, "Not a peep." And that has all changed because she has turned to and come into that little female voice that we have sometimes. So, part of what Jerome will share with you and what I'd like you to know about what he has accomplished in this last year is that he's continued to be a student at CSUB. He has received his certificate in drug and alcohol counseling through CSUB's Extended University. He volunteers at the Ebony Counseling Center part-time through Clinica Sierra Vista to work on his counseling hours. And if that isn't enough, he's also working on the Homeless Center Job Program in their Highway Clean Project. And not only did he make the commitment to work hard to get his daughter back, really heroic efforts, but he has changed his life and he's giving back to this community. So first, I'd like for Jerome to say just a few words, if you would, please.
Good morning. So, I found this, and Seawright Mills once wrote when he was talking about the sociological imagination, the idea that the individual understand his own experience and can gauge his own fate only by locating himself within his period. And so this process has allowed me to locate myself, and by locating myself, I've been able, I'll be applying for my bachelor's next spring at CSUB, and I recently got a substance use disorder counseling position at Aspire Counseling Services. So, you know, I'm just forever grateful to all these social services for what they do because it's allowed me to, you know, like I said, locate myself in my period and get my daughter back and, you know, find a sustainable future for me and my children. And I just thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Jerome. And, you know, really, when we have the reunification day, there are several who come up and graduate, and their children stand with them, and there are a lot of tears from the family, the social workers, the folks who, CASA, that worked closely with the family to bring them through this journey and mend them to be a much stronger family than they were to start with. The precious little boy, Anthony, who's run up and down the aisles and stole the show, belongs to Sam Cotton. Sam's story is unique. Anthony was born on September 28th, and both baby and mama were post talks. And mom left the hospital immediately after having the baby and left the baby behind. And then she actually wasn't located until about October 5th, when she came back into the hospital, very ill, and died just hours later. And it was then that Sam found he had a little baby. He was living in another state, in Michigan. Made every effort to get here and was here by the 8th, and has never stopped working on his son's case plan since. He was very honorable with the department and talked about a couple challenges that he had, that he felt he needed to overcome to be a good parent. He did just that. He found a job that was flexible enough for him to work through a case plan to get his child out of dependency, and also attended every single doctor appointment that his little Anthony had. And you can see he's a robust, beautiful little boy today. So Sam, I'd like you to come up and, while we celebrate you for uniting, and I know he has the loving support of his mom, Dana, who's helping him, you know? And it's awesome to have family support, nothing like it. Sam?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to say, I'm here, I'm honored to be here today. I struggled with addiction a big part of my life, and it wasn't until my son, Anthony, was born that I felt any reason to be clean. The only choice I have now is to be the best father I can be for Anthony. Even though failing was not an option for me, my caseworker, Monica, made it a whole lot easier with her commitment and endless encouragement. She let me know throughout that she was invested in Anthony coming home to his father. So with the support of Monica, my mother, and my family, I was able to take the steps necessary to get my life on track and was awarded sole and physical custody of my son, Anthony. And now that he is home, we love spending time outside, and he loves his bath time. My priority is to provide for him a safe and loving home for him to grow up in. And I just want to thank you guys for, Social Services, for being there for me, and it was a great experience, and I have a great life now with my son.
So, truly, God bless the incredible people who go the extra mile to make sure that their children have their parents. I'd like to turn to Ramonda Marquez to close this out in comments.
Thank you, Director Murphy. Esteemed supervisors, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again today. You may recall that last year, when I talked to you about Family Reunification Day, I told you that it's a process of building better neighbors. That not only is this process important for each of these children and each of these families, it's important for our community. Because as you can see through the example of Jerome and the example of Mr. Cotton, through building that fundamental block of the family, we have better neighbors and our community is a safer, stronger place. Thank you for supporting Family Reunification celebrations. The court brought this together six years ago because we recognize it is our fundamental commission, and we appreciate that you join in celebrating the progress that we make together in a collaborative effort. I would like to close by sharing with you, since I stood before you last year, that we have reunified approximately 133 families and 200... 133 families and 262 children. So if you help me with the math, that's over two families a week, that's over five children a week. Our department, our collaborative with the court, is truly making a difference. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, and Jerome and Sam, congratulations. Way to go. Now I'm going to exercise the chair's prerogative, and we're going to hear item 29, and after, at the conclusion of 29, we'll come back to item 10. Item 29 is a request to declare impasse in bargaining over a successor, a successor memorandum of understanding with the Kern County Firefighters Union and request to submit impasse to mediation. Mr. Also.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Following huge property tax losses to the county in 2016, progress is being made, as you know, in addressing the fiscal crisis in the county's general fund. However, the county continues to be challenged with its fire fund. Cost increases primarily related to labor, with no commensurate decrease in spending or increase in sustainable, ongoing revenue sources, continue to perpetuate a structural budget deficit in the county's fire fund. This deficit is currently projected to increase to nearly $9 million next fiscal year, or 1.2 million more than last year. This deficit, if left unaddressed, will continue to place an undue financial burden on other county services and public safety functions, and even more importantly, challenges our ability to fund critical capital investment needs for fire department facilities, vehicles, and other equipment, including a county-wide, multimillion-dollar communication system for first responders, which is crucial to keeping the public, firefighters, and all first responders effective in their jobs and safe. After nearly two years of contract talks with the firefighters' union, we have failed to reach an acceptable resolution to address the department's fiscal crisis while also maintaining effective fire services for our residents throughout the county. As a result, we are now at impasse in these negotiations. As Mr. Brown will detail for you in just a moment, the county is specifically asking the Kern County Firefighters Union to implement reforms to overtime policy that reduce overtime costs by at least $3.4 million annually. These reforms were recommended by both the county's independently-elected auditor controller and the Center for Public Safety Management in their fairly recent audit of the fire department. These changes are to bring the fire department into alignment with the Fair Labor Standards Act, or FLSA, requirements, of which the county is currently paying in excess. I want to acknowledge Intern Chief David Witt for his cooperation and leadership under difficult circumstances. Chief Witt is making a difference, and I thank him for all he's doing to maintain the high level of service for his department that they provide for our community while also reducing costs where he's able. I also want to acknowledge David Nelson, who is the president of 1301, who burns the candle at both ends, both as a firefighter, paramedic, and as the president of the union, which is not an easy gig to do both of those things. I'd like to acknowledge his integrity and professionalism throughout our negotiations. My team and I look forward to beginning the mediation process on the item before your board today, and with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Brown to walk through some details, and I believe Chief Witt has some comments following that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Devin Brown, Chief Human Resources Officer for Kern County. I also, too, want to thank David Nelson, Rob McCandlish, and the rest of the bargaining team, although we haven't come to an agreement on a successor MOU, and we're before you today requesting to declare impasse in those negotiations. The discussions that we've had with their team have been civil and friendly, and I believe productive, except for the fact that we haven't gotten to reach an agreement. So I really appreciate the camaraderie that they have and the civility that they've shown. What we're here today to do is to request a declaration, a formal declaration of impasse in the successor MOU negotiations with the Kern County Firefighters Union. We're not here today to ask you to impose any terms and conditions on any of our employees, specifically those in the firefighter and engineer and captain and battalion chief ranks of the fire department. This process is established by state law and your board's employer-employee relations resolution. It is put together to ensure that the parties, in this case, the association and the county, have every opportunity to engage with each other to reach an agreement, and we are still hopeful that we can reach an agreement. But we have been negotiating since July, or June 11th of 2018, and even prior to that, there have been discussions for over two years with this group trying to find ways to collectively resolve the fire fund deficit. We have not reached an agreement on a successor MOU, and I believe, based on where we're at in each of our bargaining positions, that we are far apart and will not reach an agreement without engaging a third-party mediator and potentially what we call a fact-finding process. So we are, and I'll detail you the points of disagreement. I do want to start by saying that the letter that's before your board today has several attachments to it, and those documents are very detailed and complex on what we're asking from each other. And the reason why we do that is because it makes it easier to facilitate the eventual contract. So it's, those documents that are attached are proposed contract language changes and represent all of the proposals that the county and the fire union are asking of each other. The letter that precedes those documents is, in fact, a summary of the most important points of disagreement that the parties are facing right now as we continue to seek agreement and an MOU that will last for some time. So our county employer-employee relations resolution requires, when an impasse has been reached at the bargaining table, that the matter be put before your board, setting forth the points of disagreement and with any requests for mediation. Your board has three options. You can determine that there has been insufficient effort between the parties to reach an agreement and remand the matter back for further negotiations and consideration. You can elect that further consideration and negotiations between the parties will not result in settlement, and you can attempt to mediate the dispute yourselves. Or you can declare impasse and submit the dispute to mediation, which I'll talk about what that process is. So if the matter is submitted to a third-party mediator, the parties can mutually agree on a mediator to use. If we are unable to agree on that mediator, we may request a mediator from our state or federal mediation service. A mediation of the dispute is confidential, and the cost of the mediation, if there's any cost, is split between the parties. And today, we are going to request that your board declare impasse and submit the matter to mediation. The county, as Mr. Also has indicated, is seeking some reforms to overtime and the way that we pay overtime for our employees. We have, as you know, reached an agreement with two other bargaining units, our largest one, SEIU, and our Kern County Prosecutors Association, with similar changes. We are simply trying to pay overtime as required by law, and that law is the Fair Labor Standards Act, which is a federal law that's been in place since the 1930s. So the proposals that are before you are specifically requesting that any paid leave time, which is non-productive, meaning vacation, sick leave, holiday time, be not considered as hours worked for determining whether somebody's eligible for overtime. That is a major point of disagreement that the parties are at. That is a major point of disagreement that the parties are at. The association in this case is asking for certain types of overtime regardless of whether paid time is used, to be paid at time and a half. They're also asking that paid sick leave still count towards hours worked for overtime eligibility determination. We are also not proposing any salary increases through this contract term, which we're proposing to expire in June 30th of 2021. To the contrary, the association is asking for a total of 26% salary increases in base salary throughout a contract term that would expire January 1st, 2025. And those increases are detailed in the letter, but would not start till January 1st of 2021. They are also requesting that special pays be administered for emergency medical technicians and that special pay be given for members of the association who are employed on hazmat, ARF, Hilo, USAR, crew boss, heavy equipment operator, and arson investigator assignments to cap out a total of 5% special pay. As Mr. Also has indicated, we are facing a fiscal deficit, structural deficit in the fire fund. We have been very clear since the outset of the negotiations that we are trying to achieve savings in that fund through this contract. Unfortunately, we have not been able to reach an agreement in the negotiations. And so we are asking today for your board to declare impasse and submit the matter to a resolution process through mediation and potentially a fact-finding process, which is at the election of the union to request and hopefully resolve that impasse and reach a final agreement between the parties. If there is no agreement reached after those processes are concluded, we will be coming back to your board potentially with a request to implement the changes of our last best and final offer. But that is many months away. We are simply asking at this point to continue the process and reengage with our fire union and utilize third parties to hopefully reach an agreement between us. That concludes my comments. Of course, I'm here to answer any questions, but I believe Chief Witt has some additional comments to make.
Any questions before we go to the chief? Go ahead, chief.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board of supervisors. I'd like to thank the board for not closing fire stations and not reducing staffing on our fire engines. I know this hasn't been easy for any of us. I appreciate the comments by the CAO and I appreciate the professionalism of our union going through this process. I have a few announcements I'd like to make. Together with the CAO, I'm making an official request for an additional $4 million in one-time funding from county general fund reserves next fiscal year to purchase and replace critical emergency response equipment to improve our operational effectiveness. I thank the board in advance for their approval of the request. Second, in the coming weeks, working with the CAO, I will be asking the board to allow me to immediately create a new administrative position in the fire department. This will be an at-will senior employee responsible and reporting directly to me to improve our financial effectiveness of current events and best management practices. And I thank the board in advance for this request. Third, in the coming weeks, and in line with the recommendations provided by the recent operational analysis of the fire department, I will be leading a comprehensive review of the fire department's entire fee schedule, reviewing the establishment of the fire development impact fee on new developments that would be utilized to fund needed emergency response equipment to our aging fleet. We'll be studying the fire prevention fees to ensure we are applying best practices with respect to our fire prevention work and the fees associated with that work. As part of the same study, I'll be reviewing the department's indirect cost rate, which specifically deals with a portion of billing for cost reimbursement of extraordinary services. Additionally, we have hired a consultant. The CAO staff has worked very hard in helping me hire a consultant to look at the cost formula for contract cities and to do this in a fair and equitable way to ensure we're doing best management practices across the county. Recently, my staff and myself and thanks to the firemen, we were able to address a $2.2 million shortfall for next year's budget. And we've been able to do that effectively and we continue to work towards that goal and we have, we will accomplish that goal. The fire department will continue to maintain a close working relationship with the CAO and continue to apply principles of lean six sigma to our operations. And I'm happy to say our guys have put us in third in the amount of savings through lean six sigma. The fire department is third, thanks to our guys. Third in the number of people trained in all of Kern County. And that's a testament to the guys. See, I believe in the guys and I appreciate everything they do. It's all about pathways and I believe we have a path to financial well-being. I also believe we can eventually accomplish this mission as a team.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions from the board before we go to the public? Okay, we'll open it up. If there are anyone here that'd like to make a comment, I know Mr. Nelson would. And your attorney as well?
Yes, he'll follow up after I do.
Good morning.
So, good morning. David Nelson, president of the Kern County Firefighters Association, chairman of couch, honorable members of the board. I'm before you this morning representing 507 members of the Kern County Firefighters Association. I want to clarify some misconception. Our vote is not due to the fact that this contract was solely based on FLSA or our overtime recalculations. It was based on the fact that it is our fourth contract in a row with concessions being given to the county without any changes in our compensation packages. 429 to 1 is what the rejection factor was. Previously, we have negotiated away nearly 33% retirement benefits for newer employees as well as significant increases to retirement and medical benefit contributions. We have done our part to help the county. We have given back. On top of giving back, we're working longer hours in more dangerous conditions, facing fire conditions that are beyond what's been experienced in previous years. This proposal was intended on our counter to be a working document with which both sides could work. To simply slide it back across the table with a rejection was quite frankly disrespectful. We understand the haste in which the county has progressed to finding this last best and final offer due to the upcoming budget reviews. We understand you're trying to budget for what your following year's going to be. With that, we took that into consideration in our presentation. The expectation has been set for the interim chief Witt to establish a five-year budget plan. We feel that he should be able to tell you what his five-year cost of labor is going to be. The length of contract can be considered a win for the county. It keeps us out of perpetual negotiations, decreasing your labor, my labor, and expenditures. And it's something that can be embraced by the lean six program. The starting officer offer we do feel was reasonable and would bring us within mean of what our comparable departments are. This plan would have reduced the taxpayer burden associated with employee retention. $17 million alone has been wasted on the fact that we have employees walking out the door and leading to other departments. This contract also would have saved approximately $40 million over the next five years in the fact that we wouldn't be experiencing those employees' leave. And it also reduces the burden to our retirement system. As we all know, as an employee leaves going to a higher-paid department, they result in a higher retirement contribution, which CASERA is going to have to absorb. The cost to taxpayers alone for not addressing the retentions in the public safety sector is going to run into the hundreds of millions of dollars if not addressed today. Your Kern County firefighters have been subjected to ridicule, painted in a negative light with other county departments, and blamed as a reason other departments aren't able to receive wage increases or have had to cut services. The fact of the matter is, none of the problems the county faces today with the fire department are those related to the men and women providing those services. They're related to the department not having been funded appropriately to begin with. The addition of services without additional funding to cover the cost of operation, inadequate contracts being secured with contract cities, poor budgetary oversight by previous department heads, and no accountability for poor fund management. I would like to thank Chief Witt for the efforts that he has made to rein this in and bring it under control. This, though, is your fire fund deficit. Instead, the men and women of Kern County Fire Department have been villainized by our county leaders. Oftentimes, our employee retention problem is addressed by making the assumption employees decided to leave to go back to their hometown, closer to their families, or where they grew up in. The reality, though, is these employees choose to leave because the county does not offer them any incentives to relocate their families to Kern. They are not given any reason to put down roots in the communities in which they serve. They are given many reasons, though, to leave. Continual admonishment and attack by our leaders, threats of layoff, compensation reduction, station staffing reductions threatening our safety, and so on. Why would anyone want to work in this environment? I am before you today not only as a firefighter, but as a taxpayer. Your Kern County firefighters have come to the table with many cost-saving measures that would have resulted in significant savings to the taxpayer. As we work through these challenges, I want to remind everyone that as your employees, we are looking at these problems and trying to find 20-year solutions. We will be stuck in the end with the decisions that we make. Today is the day that we allow bygones to be bygones, return to the table, and get back to work. In closing, I would like to say that the employees that are sitting behind me, your employees, are representative of the numbers of employees that will depart looking for greener pastures over the next several years if we continue to head down the path that we are. Thank you for your time.
Morning.
Good morning, chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob McCandlish. I'm the chief negotiator for the Kern County Firefighters Union, Local 1301. On May 21st, 2019, I received a copy of a letter that was sent to the board of supervisors from Devin Brown, where he has requested the county to declare impasse on the Kern County Firefighters Union, Local 1301. The letter states the points of disagreement are, number one, exclude nonproductive paid time off, accept jury duty and paid military leave from the total number of hours worked used to determine overtime eligibility. And number two, no increase in salary for a contract term to expire June 30th of 2021. My question is, are these the only two items the county is seeking to declare impasse over? The reason I'm asking is because this is not the same LBFO, the last best and final offer the county passed on April 11th, 2019. More importantly, what was presented to our association members to vote on. If these are the only two items the county is seeking, then I would request the board supervisors to give the KCFFU the time needed to allow our members to vote on these items. Under recap, April 11th, 2019, the last special final also concluded or included a change from work period from 28-day schedule to an 18-day schedule, requiring overtime after 136 hours worked. Delete administrative assignment and compensate those employees with a special pay allowance of 5% and payment of overtime for only actual hours worked at a regular rate of pay defined by FLSA. Not to mention, when Mr. Brown spoke earlier, he talked about proposals that were attached. One of the proposals attached also had a longevity of 2% stricken out. Is that something that's going to be declared as well? It's unclear at this time. Our counter was time work shall include all paid leaves for scheduled overtime. For all other overtime, the following levels or leaves shall be counted as time work, which includes sick, mandatory, emergency callbacks, and all deployments under the California State and Federal Mutual Aid System, which in some cases are reimbursed. The following salary increases we did ask for. We did ask for a total of approximately 26% in increases over the net, over until expires in 2025. The history of this department is that they have not received an increase in salary since 2007. This has put them below mean in the salary as follows. Firefighters' total compensation is down 24.07%. Fire engineers are down 22.87%. Fire captains are down 25.41%. And fire battalion chiefs are down 26.05% from mean from the surrounding areas. The county's position is that the fire fund is in a deficit of $8.8 million. In order to understand this, the county paid to have an operational and administrative analysis completed by CPSM. The report showed 63 recommendations to save money and/or increase revenues. Only 13 of these dealt directly with the KCFFU. During negotiations, the county has looked at these 13 items and never refused to implement any other savings or increase revenues, which have been addressed in this report. And I'm glad to see that the chief mentioned those today, that he's moving forward with implementing some of these other revenues. We've spoke about these throughout our negotiations and they've met on deaf ears. In closing, the KCFFU feels the county is misleading the public. This is evident in a letter I mentioned earlier, where the county stated the points of disagreement were only two issues, when in fact the county's LBFO had more. For this reason, we are requesting the county delay declaring impasse until we have our members revote on these outstanding two issues. Thank you for your time.
Yes, to our honorable supervisors and chairman, the Lord would have all of us to respect our leaders. And so I want to acknowledge you. My name is Curtis James Bingham, senior street evangelist for our Lord and Savior God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only-gotten Son of a holy heavenly Father God Almighty. Thank you, Father, we trust. I would just like to first of all say, everybody here is here for a reason. And the Lord wants us not just to look at ourselves, but to take a look at our supervisors and to really thank you guys for what you do do. There's no school that teaches you how to be a supervisor. The Lord God Almighty Himself has given you guys the wisdom and the knowledge to do what you do. And I'm gonna be so happy when I see this fire thing get itself together. I've been coming for quite a while. And you know, we got to make sure we care about what you do. You handle so many things all year long. And so to put this thing to bed would be a great thing. So I just wanted to bless you in that area the Lord would have us to do to recognize who you guys are. It's an honor to stand before honor. So I just wanted to do what the Lord had me to do. I also like to say, if I was a mediator, this is just a lot of different mediators, first thing I would look at, I would say, no raise in 10 years? I mean, that would weigh heavy on my head. And then I would think about overtime. So no raise in 10 years versus this overtime thing. When you put the two together, you'd have to do some real consideration for the fire department. And then when you look at your city, every city has a foundation. Our foundation is law enforcement, then the fire department, then the district attorney. Because you've got to remember, you don't just do fires by itself. You've got all this crime that's around it. Then you have to recognize the city is growing. It ain't getting smaller. They gonna be responsible for every single building that comes up. We go to bed at nighttime with smoke detectors and everything. There's a lot of people worried about their places burning down. We're depending on them to get out here and keep everything down. A fire can fool you. And I want everybody to please be fair. I mean, be fair. Because when you let something go on a long time, you start to have disrespect. And then when they come in, oh, fire again. And this group and that group and that group, then you forget about who you're dealing with. You're dealing with the fire department that get out and put their life on the line each and every day. This is no plaything. You got suicides happening with them, then get injured on the job behind the scenes they see. They don't only put out fires, but they saving lives. People having heart attacks, strokes, overdoses in drugs. They there for every single one of us. So when we look at them, they here for all of us that's here. We have to really take a good notice when we talk about fire department. Who is the fire department? The fire department is one of your most important servants. I'm your servant. The fire department, your servant. The greatest servant you got is law enforcement. We have to do our best to take care of them first. That's a must. Because if we don't, we'll be looking at what we're looking at, what PG&E is looking at. Biggest powerful organization there is money, money, money. Look at them now. Bankrupt. Fire they wasn't expecting. 15,000 homes and this and that burnt up, people out of houses. Whoever expected that? Nobody ever expected that. See, when it comes to a fire, a fire is sneaky. It's creepy. It don't give you no notice. Before you know it, it pops up. The fire department gotta be there 24/7 whether it's a fire or not. Because you can't play with a fire. Our holy scripture in the Bible says, "A fire will not say it's enough." If you don't put it out, it'll burn down everything. And people keep playing around because it ain't happening. Oh, they just hit the fire department doing their job. No, their job is greater than just a job.
Could I ask you to bring your statement to a close?
Oh, yes, sir. Chairman, I didn't, clock start going there.
We didn't even start it for a couple of minutes.
Oh, thank you, thank you. But I just wanted to say.
And you want to provide us a service, you could provide us a service right now.
Oh, thank you, okay, sir. Let's just make sure we really respect them, do everything we can. Rainy day fun, emergency fun. Hey, it's here. And whatever we can do, because a mediator, we got five up there. You can do the job. You can be fair. I've seen you be fair to the fire department. You've done some great things and I thank you for what you have done. But I pray you give them everything that they asked for. They know what it takes to do their job. We finna leave, but see, they got to go do this job. So let's be fair. Fair with them. Give them what they want. Let's close this thing out. And another thing, may I say, chairman, we just need money. And I pray we can do it again and try to.
On that, we agree.
Yeah. That 1%. That 1% thing didn't go through, but California City went three times, and they smiling now. So we got a way to try to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chairman, for being so kind to me, and I appreciate you.
Hi, good morning. I'm Howard Lieberman, and my law firm, Mestagni Holstead, represents these fine men and women of the Kern County Fire Department, the Fire Association. I had prepared some remarks like Dave and Robbie had, but I've seen some things that Devin has said, that Ryan has said, that the chief has said that I wanted to follow up on. I mean, first, Mr. Alsop has done a really good job helping the county recover, to the point where the general fund is now much healthier today than it was when we started negotiations. And at the same time, the chief, when he needs essential equipment, has to come here and ask for special money to get that equipment. And what we're asking is for, first, this Board of Supervisors to really look at these reports from these outside consultants and actually fund the fire budget properly so that the chief doesn't have to come and ask for essential equipment. He said, at best, these guys here, and these men and women, have made, have made the fire department the number three cost saver for the county. And this is the, this is the place, this is in California where fire season isn't a season anymore. If anything, it's about 10 months of the year. Pretty soon, it's gonna be the whole year. So if, if my kid comes to me and says, Daddy, can I have money to go to the movies? And every year, every week, I give them a $5 fund to go to the movies. They're gonna be running at a deficit. They're gonna have to make up that extra $10 to go to the movies. And that's what's happening here. The chief is having to come to ask for more equipment and ask for special money. That money should be in the budget. And if the money's in the budget, because it's in the general fund, because Ryan Alsop has done a bang-up job, he's done a great job, then this group, which has given concessions for about 12 years, doesn't have to give any more concessions and can actually, by spending a nickel, you can oftentimes save a dollar. They've said all these percentages that they're down at the different ranks. 27% for firefighters, 25% for engineers. Well, that leaves these, these people who, look, the CPI has gone up 2%, 4%, 3% all these years. They're at income stagnation. The only way they make more money is to work more, which is a little easier to do because people are fleeing and going to other departments. But they live and they, and they bank on the money that they make in the overtime. Then you go to the, then you go to the board letter. And the board letter is, you know, because when we get closer, Robbie does a great job at these negotiations and Dave, but when it gets to these stages, they bring me in because we have to start getting ready for fact-finding. So I need to start understanding what's going on. So Mr. Brown did a really great job summarizing the association's position. But he didn't do the best job, because I had a lot of questions, summarizing the county's position. Because it made it look like the county was only asking for two things, which was basically the elimination of leave as hours worked and no salary increase. But I started looking through this package, and I found about three or four more things that the county was asking for. And some of it, I couldn't even tell, because they'd have a last best and final, which has a lot of proposals attached to it. But a lot of the takeaways in the proposals, things like longevity, which are crossed out, don't get put on the page for the last best and final. And then other things, which are our takeaways on the last best and final, such as changing the FLSA work period from 28 days to 18 days, which, which in conjunction with changing leaves as hour, leaves as hours worked, is another hit to how overtime is compensated. And, and that, while things like the longevity and the 5% administrative pay, which are struck out, don't make their way to the last best and final, things on the last best and final, the last best and final cover sheet, but they're in the package. So we fear that these takeaways are still gonna be there when we get to fact-finding, because they're gonna say, well, look, if you read in the board letter, and we're not talking about in the board letter, and we're not talking about in the last best and final summary, but in the stuff that we attached, oh, yeah, we asked for that, too. So about two things drop off the page to get the last best and final. And then their last best and final has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 bullet points. But yet, they only have two bullet points on, on their, on the board letter. So we're very confused. If we are going to impasse, we can't tell from the board letter what we're going to impasse on. If it's just these two items, well, this group hasn't voted on those two items. I mean, we don't really know where they'd come down on that. They voted on this big package, which had about five takeaways, which aren't on the, on the cover sheet. Davis said, "We're willing to negotiate. We're willing to still negotiate." So either, Mr. Brown says you have three options. Actually, there's a fourth option. You can send us, you can send us back, you can send us back to the table. That's one. We're happy to do, we're happy to do that. Two, you can say, geez, Mr. Brown, what are we going, what, what, what are we going to impasse on for the county? Because you've only listed two things, but if you read the fine print, there's about five things. At least correct your board letter so the firefighters know what they're going to impasse on, if, if they're gonna be sent to impacts. You know, we're, we're happy to go to mediation if that's, if, if that's where you send us. We think we, we can have some good, respectful dialogue, and we appreciate your comments about how, how civilized our group has been. But the chief has said, they're the third, they're the third best in saving money. But they're also the place that keeps all the buildings in the forests from, from burning down. Is that where you want? If you keep going here, we're gonna be first. And that's not a prize we want, we want to win. Do you want us to, to save all the money on the backs and the paychecks of these men and women who budget their lives, not just on their base pay, but on their take-home and their overtime pay? Anyway, I've, I've talked enough. Please let us continue to negotiate. If not, please have Mr. Brown clarify what the county's position is. Because if, if you put out board letters like this and the press picks up on it, it makes them sound much more reasonable and likely they want so much less than they actually want when you read the fine print. So please clarify. If some of these items are off the table, if you don't want, if longevity is gone, if the 18-day pay period is gone, let us know. We can revote on that. Anyway, I'm getting redundant, and you were, you have been kind not to pull the plug or the, the watch on me like, like the last man. But as the last man said, we want you to be fair. Because fair is fair.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Were any other public speakers on this item? Any other public speakers on this particular item? Seeing, seeing none, I was, oh, Mr. Turnipseed, would you like to speak on this item? If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this item, could I get you to come to the front row so we can get you to the microphone quickly? Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Some things we all know. Every department must be fiscally responsible and balance its budget with the resources given by you. Every department needs to be efficient and effective in the delivery of those services. We also have to live, we can't live in the past. This county, and many years ago, and none of you were here, because of a booming oil economy and other things, made commitments that were unsustainable. And we've been going down the road with Band-Aids over time, trying to address, trying to fix. But this isn't the boom time of oil. This wasn't the boom time when the county, in the early 2000s, when commitments were made that over the long period of time are not sustainable. That's not your fault. It's not my fault. It's not their fault. The question today is, the county must, we're coming to that point in the road where we can't use Band-Aids anymore, and we have to address the problem. And that's pretty much what it is. And I don't think you can tax or fee your way to prosperity. You've all said that before. So it's time for serious negotiations. You've been at it for, what, two years? But the problem has to be addressed. You cannot allow the past to haunt you and fester and fester until you address the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this item? Seeing none, I'll return it to the board for questions, comments, or action. Mr. Brown or anybody on staff, would you like to respond to anything you heard?
Chairman Couch, members of the board, yes, just a few comments.
I'm gonna step out for just one second. If you're not done by the time I get back, Supervisor Magger will handle it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Members of the board, since there was some confusion as to what we were asking the association to agree to, allow me some of the opportunity to clarify. We are and continue to request that the firefighters' union agree to our last best and final offer. That is attached to the board letter. It has been handed to the negotiating team on April 11th. The association voted on that last best and final offer. We are not allowed to discuss that with the members as they vote. And so it's up to the association to inform them what that last best and final offer includes. We believe we were clear at the table what we were asking for and in the documents that were submitted at the bargaining table and are attached to your board's staff letter. The reason why our points of disagreement are only two bullet points is because we believe, based on the Kern County Firefighters Union's last counter to our last best and final offer that we received on the 19th of April, that those are the only points of disagreement that would prohibit us from reaching a successor MOU. And I say that because their offer, counter offer to us specifically says, with respect to the change of work cycle from 28 days to 18 days, that Kern County Firefighters Union agrees with this with an, with an effective date of 6/30 of 2019. That is not a point of disagreement at that point. Going down the page, we have our proposal to change the salaries, which is Article 10. And it says, Kern County proposes to delete the administrative assignment classifications with a higher base salary rate and compensate those employees with a special pay allowance of 5%. Kern County Firefighters Association, Union is okay with this with the following salary increases. It's those salary increases that present the point of disagreement. That's why those are included in our board letter. The other items that are listed in the, both offers are included in the, the letter and, and represent the points of disagreement that I believe, based on the negotiations, are the sticking point and have been for many, many months. It has been clearly communicated by the association to our bargaining team during those bargaining association, bargaining sessions, that they are not accepting those changes that we're requesting with respect to overtime. That is why we believe that we are in impasse, firmly believe that we are in impasse, and must go through the process of resolving that impasse using a mediator who will meet with each group separately and attempt to make each party understand the points of disagreement and where we are coming from. They've asked for continuation of negotiations. That is not gonna be successful in bringing an agreement forward to your board, based on the 10 months that we've had so far. It's time to give a mediator the chance to do that. It is still part of the negotiating process. During the mediation, each party can submit alternate proposals to each other to hope to reach an agreement. And we are willing to go forward with that process and think that is the best chance to resolve this dispute and hopefully reach an agreement. That concludes my, my comments. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I just clarify just a couple of things, a few seconds?
A couple of things, a few seconds, you bet.
In reference to what Mr. Brown just said, and as far as the 28-day to the 18-day.
Give us your name again for the record, please.
What's that?
Could you give us your name again for the record, please?
Rob McCandlish.
Thank you.
In reference to 28-day to the 18-day, we did agree to that. If all the other conditions of our last best and final or counter to the last best and final were met, which they weren't, so we did not tend to even agree to this 18-day. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Supervisor Gleason? By the way, any other staff comments before we go to the board? Seeing none, thank you.
Mr. Brown, so you clarified, the last best and final is clear. We have a letter that clearly states, these are the issues that we're going to impact mediation for. Is that correct?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair. We believe by including the attachments and discussing what I felt were the points of disagreement, I believe that it is clear. And it was made clear to the bargaining unit that voted on this last best and final, what they were voting on. And the, that's the important document that should be considered today.
Tough call, but I'm supporting the interim chief, and I'm going to make a motion on
I don't have any other lights on for any other comments. I'll ask, I'll ask a question. During, I know this is another step in this, in the negotiation process, I'll call it. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I'm terming at that. During this process, can other ideas come forward through the mediator, each side? Are we, are we starting to narrow the scope? We're narrowing the scope, I guess, of the things that we agree on and disagree on so far. But other items, as long as it's agreed to by each party, could be included in a new contract?
Chairman Couch, that, that is correct. The mediation process does not foreclose any other options being presented by either party as an attempt to reach an agreement. We are limited as an organization from imposing any additional items.
Understood.
Concessions against the fire, fire union at this point, though.
Okay. How long do you, well, have, have you all spoken so far about who you would each agree upon as far as a mediator? Or has that conversation not been had yet?
Chairman Couch, that's the next step if your board makes that request.
Any other question? Any other questions for any other board supervisor?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second from Supervisor Scrivner? Supervisor Perez?
Can I get some direction from counsel or Devin or CAO, whoever's appropriate? Help me understand and contextualize what was presented to this board in terms of the appropriateness or consideration to go back to two items and vote on items that were not before that body? Could you give some clarification there? Because that's confusing. And I want to move this process along, because I think we have stalled, and I want to get to a resolution. But I want to address that concern as it's been raised by the membership. Can somebody help clarify that point, please?
Supervisor Perez through the chair. It would be appropriate to go back potentially for a membership vote if we were changing our last best and final offer. We are not changing that offer, as was unclear to some of the speakers today, but hopefully is cleared up now. That is our position. That is the position we're asking your board to declare impasse on. And that last best and final offer was already voted on by the membership and rejected this, this past month. So I don't believe it's necessary or appropriate to resubmit that vote to, to the association. We are not attempting to change it at all.
Okay, so is there any merit to that argument? I, I appreciate there may have been confusion about it, so I don't believe anybody's attempting to mislead this board. Sometimes these matters just need to be fleshed out in public and clarified. So Devin, your position on that?
Supervisor Perez, I believe there wouldn't be any merit to resubmitting the last best and final to the membership to vote on.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's helpful. I, I think we are at a critical juncture. We do not seem to be able to agree. Chairman, I see you. Chairman, I see a gentleman in the front row who is trying to get my attention. Could we please indulge him if he would like to address?
If you'd like.
I would appreciate it.
You want to recognize Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate that.
This letter is very important, because this letter is the public record on what we're going impasse for. Even if you guys vote to go to impasse, what I ask for is for there to be a corrected letter laying out the five to seven bullet points of takeaways that the county wants, so that it's clear in the letter, that it's clear to the press, and so that it is clear to the public. Then we can come back at the next meeting and you can vote on that letter, but not on this shell game of like seven takeaways, getting summarized into five takeaways, getting summarized into two takeaways, because our issue is with the board, our issue is with the board letter. It is misleading as, as, as you read it, because it makes it look like, this is all we want, one and two. That is not true. Let's lay out all the, all the points, then when we get to the mediator, he knows what we're talking about. We're not, we're not wasting time arguing with the mediator over what we're actually at impasse for. We're not wasting time later at fact-finding, arguing over what are we actually at impasse on. Then it's clear in the board letter, it's clear for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Lieberman, are you...
Chairman, I appreciate that.
Okay. Can I ask staff, following up on this question? Is there a way to clarify Mr. Lieberman's concern by way of reference in this motion? I mean, there's gotta be a way to say, what we're going to impasse on is, are the following points? And if you want to do that by reference to your attachment? Or is the attachment adequate to the board letter?
Chairman Couch, members of the board, the mediator will look at the last best and final offer and the last offer from the association. They're not going to be looking at the board letter for any guidance or direction on what the, what we're negotiating or through those mediation. So, I don't, I don't believe it's necessary to come back another week and bring a revised board letter. We will work with Mr. Lieberman, his group, and any other members of the public who are inquiring about, including the media, about what the last best and final offer includes. But our motion, our request for your board today is to declare impasse on our last best and final offer, which is attached to our board letter, it's the first document, and goes, and includes the proposal language that we're asking the firefighters' union to agree to. And, and so, that's what we're requesting your, your board to do, and to submit that last best, about, best, last best and final offer to mediation, to be decided upon by the parties.
Supervisor Perez?
Chairman, I really appreciate your attempt to get some clarification there. I'm not an expert in this area by any stretch, and it's confusing to me. And so, I'd like some clarification from counsel, that you are comfortable legally with moving forward, because I certainly do not want to procedurally make an error, as I hear a representation being made by an attorney that I have to believe he in good faith is representing here today, and also do not want to give our firefighters and their families the impression that their concerns are not important to this board. They are important to me, and I certainly believe they're important to this board. So, please help me, because I remain confused, and you have two oppositional positions that are naturally oppositional, so I'm trying to get some clarification. If you could help me, I would really appreciate that.
Supervisor Perez through the chair, in reviewing the, the board letter, it does refer to the last best and final in a number of occasions, and then in the points of disagreement, says the county's LBFO, which stands for last best and final, proposes. And then there are just two bullet points, although the, the last best and final is the next document. In an abundance of caution and making sure that the record is very clear for what it is that your board would be declaring impasse on and sending to mediation, I think it would be appropriate to amend the, the motion so that the points of disagreement are the county's last best and final offer, which includes a number of things as outlined in the, in the attached document. So, it's not just the, the two, the two items that are in the letter. That, I think it, it would be fine for the motion to refer to the entire last best and final offer.
Chairman, that was your suggestion?
Yes.
Can I give, can I have your thoughts on that?
Well, that's what I was hoping that someone over there would say.
Okay. May I ask?
It seems like there's a piece of paper that's attached. If we could just say, what we mean is the last best and final offer, regardless of what the board letter may articulate.
I know, I know in the law, we do have to have a meeting of the minds, and the record established is critical to that, Chairman, to keep us moving forward, rather than getting hung up again. So, I would like to know what my colleagues think about that. I certainly want to move in unison on this issue, as we've been attempting to get some, you know, resolution for some time. So, if they're not interested in commenting, that's fine.
Supervisor Gleason has...
Oh, I see. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Supervisor Gleason?
I think it's a legitimate point, gentlemen raised. I, I, I don't agree with it, but I understand what you're saying, and I'm willing to ask to edit that letter to either eliminate the entire clause of points of discrep... Can we cross out that whole part of that board letter? Points of disagreement? Just cross it out? So, it does not list the two issues that were retorted on and then leave out the last five completely? The board letter is insignificant to me. What's important is the last best and final offer. Leave the last best and final offer as attachment, but just cross off, well, edit that, that cover letter. Is that possible? We can do it right now? I mean, right now and vote on it?
I think what county council was suggesting is that an inclusion of some wording that the last best and final offer that was an attachment to the board letter was another way of skinning the cat.
That's fine, too.
I think you were just describing.
To put it in bold headlines on top of the letter, that we are, the issue is the last best and final offer, so there's no way it can be misconstrued that we're not arguing over two, these two points, we're arguing over the last best and final.
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, I think there's a number of ways of doing it, and just thinking in, down the road, when somebody may be reviewing what becomes an administrative record, which will also be the, the summary of today's proceedings, as long as you're very clear that the motion that the board is considering and voting on is to send the, to, to impasse, or to declare impasse and send to mediation, the last best and final ass...
That's fine. How do I amend my motion to accommodate that? Or do I amend my motion to accommodate that?
Yes, I, I believe you do need to amend your motion so that, the motion is that what the request to declare impasse, or to declare impasse on the county's last best and final offer.
Okay. Good value? Mr. Brown? That's, that's good value. It's clear, it's to a point, it's exact, precise of what we're, what we're doing, so I will amend my motion to accommodate that language.
Second.
Motion of second, Mr. Lieberman, does that clarify?
It doesn't, it doesn't, because within the package, there is a face sheet that says last best and final.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lieberman, can I get you to come to the microphone?
Yes.
So we can hear you.
Within the package, there's a face sheet which says last best and final offer, which is a summary of the proposal. It lists one, two, three, four, five bullet points with a number of sub-bullet points. Attached to it were a number of things that they slid across to try to get tentative agreement on, which they didn't get. There are a number of things within those attachments which did not make their way to the summary sheet. Could we at least agree that the county's position is this summary sheet which they attached to the letter?
Chairman Couch, members of the board, so the summary of, of the proposal is that it's a summary. The parties are well versed at how we were agreeing to negotiate, and that was to submit contract propos, language change proposals to each other at the bargaining table. The attachments which are attached to that summary and were attached to our last best and final clearly identify what changes we're asking the association to agree to as part of our last best and final offer. It's our position that if this were to be imposed on the employees and not part of an agreement, that those changes would be presented to your board as changes in terms and conditions of employment. The documents that Mr. Lieberman's attempting to, to, to use to muddy the, this, are, are not, simply not important for the, the negotiating, negotiation process. It's, and it, a document that was, is required by our, our board agenda process to convey information to your board on what the discussion item is going to be. The request to your board today to, to clarify, and I believe what the motion has been made and seconded on, is to declare impasse in the negotiations, and that our last best and final offer, which is attached here, including all the documents that are attached to that, which are the contract language changes, are submitted to the mediator to resolve as part of the continued negotiation process.
Well, and having all of the items submitted to the mediator gives everyone the most amount of flexibility. We're not taking something off the table. We're not adding anything that we haven't talked about. We're not taking anything off the table. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is an important thing to have going into mediation, is a multitude of things to talk about.
Mr. Lieberman, I assure you, we're not trying to play a shell game here. It's the entire document that I think we would like to submit, is that, the entire document that you are holding, which is the board letter and all of, hang on, the board letter and all of the attachments?
Yes.
We, we understands that, but we feel that board letters such as this sort of obfuscate the public record, so the public doesn't really realize how much you're trying to take from this group that is behind me.
Then, did you like, did you like Supervisor?
It makes it look like they only want to take two things.
Did, did you like Supervisor Gleason's proposal to take out those from the board letter, those two, and leave us with everything else?
I, I don't like it, but it makes things more clear. So, in that one regard...
Okay. Well, we're getting somewhere.
I'm getting somewhere.
Would, how would staff feel about that?
We're happy to resubmit for the record a revised board letter that will, the clerk would put into the, to the summary of proceedings. But I, I think the important request is that your board is declaring impasse on the last best and final offer, which has the most significant legal connotation in negotiations. It's important for your board to recognize that this is what we're asking of the association, and for the association, which I fully believe they understood at the table, what we're asking the changes to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the motion stands, and did you go ahead and second that, Supervisor Grimmer, Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chairman. I think if, if ever I've been convinced that we need some help in this negotiation process, it's now, and that's incredibly unfortunate, because the trust level and the communication openness, I think, has broken down to a really dysfunctional level that is troubling for a lot of people. And I'm so sorry that you and your families feel the way you do, targeted, attacked, that is totally unacceptable. We need to move forward in this process. This board is going to move to impasse, that is very clear to me, and I think it is incumbent on us to bring in another party to try to help communicate what is important to you and to this body in a way that is accountable. So, I hope that you can believe that this process can be fair, because we really, really significantly need to move forward. This has stalled for far too long, so as painful as it is, I am going to support the impasse as it's time to move forward. It feels almost like we need a divorce attorney at this point. It's a really unfortunate breakdown, but we need to move forward. So, with all due respect, I'm going to support the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion of second, and I'm going to call for a vote here in a second, but I just want to make a short comment. I appreciate Mr. Nelson and your team, the way it was described, your civility. I hope that continues, I'm sure that it will. I appreciate you, and Chief, I appreciate, I know you are in a difficult spot, and I just appreciate the professional job that you're doing. I think we all do. So, you have a motion of second, please cast your votes.
Mr. Gleason, please reconfirm your vote. Thank you, the motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. On to the next step. Thank you guys for being here today.
Thank you.
I believe that's going to take us back to item 10, which is public presentations. This is the portion of the meeting, well, I'll give them a moment to clear out, but if this is the portion of the meeting where, if you'd like to address the board on an item under our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda today, now would be the time to do that. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public presentation? It's hard to tell. I don't think we have any public presentations. Is there anyone trying to get down to the podium that can't? Okay, moving on to item 11, board member announcements and reports. Seeing none of those, on to item 28, which is a presentation on Launch Kern. Mr. Alsop, welcome back, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's good to be back. Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, my pleasure to introduce Mr. Weeby at my office to walk, walk you through this item. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, we're a little less than two years into our continuous improvement journey with Launch Kern, and we've talked a lot about our accomplishments, and there have been many, but I want to briefly touch on the reason behind those accomplishments. I think many organizations, including ours, can develop high-quality plans, processes, and often come up short without a purpose. And our purpose or the why behind this initiative is very simply to deliver the best possible value to our residents. And because of this board's leadership and a growing number of county leaders and employees across all departments, we are slowly but persistently developing a purpose-driven culture centered on creating this value. The evidence is clear that when employees have a purpose behind their actions, great results will follow. So, we remain committed to our goals of training and empowering employees and everyday improvement activities, so all employees can become leaders for determining how things can be improved and more value created. And as you can see from the results, Madam Clerk, if you could put the CAO's screen up, your employees have accomplished some miraculous things. We've had over 150 projects completed, nearly $19 million in savings, in both hard savings and soft savings. Close to 1,000 employees with formal training and well over 70,000 hours redirected towards mission-critical tasks. So, here today to briefly talk about the great value they're providing to county residents are a couple departments from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Chief Deputy or Deputy Director Stacy Kurohara, but up first will be your Public Health Director,
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Just a few comments here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning about one of Public Health's Lean Six Sigma project. We have posted more than 20 of our projects on the site and more than $2.1 million in savings. With the assistance of the CAO's office last month, we also hosted a one-day training session for more than 30 public health employees to get them trained, and we're just getting started. So, the project in front of you this morning revolves around the treatment of tuberculosis, or TB. Let's see if we can go to the first slide here. It's a small project, but it represents how public health is exploring all opportunities to provide a better service at a reduced cost. So, tuberculosis is a bacteria that typically infects the lungs of a person, and it's spread through coughing and sneezing. Although TB is still present in the U.S., the number of affected individuals is limited, and the historic and detrimental impacts that the disease has had on communities has been significantly curtailed due to public health efforts. In many cases now, tuberculosis can be treated at home. So, however, because TB is contagious, we want to make sure that any Kern County resident that has been diagnosed is promptly treated and carefully monitored through a program called Daily Observed Therapy, or DOT. In fact, state law actually requires that the local health departments to provide that oversight, that daily observed therapy, for each patient that they monitor, and to make sure that they are taking their prescribed medications, which thereby improves the health of not only the patient, but our community, as the chances of transmission are reduced. The problem, however, is that this type of mandated oversight is expensive, and it's not... not uncommon for a doctor to prescribe medication and treatment that exceeds nine months in duration. So we are sending out a public health employee to a TB patient's home every day, no matter where they live, five days a week, for months at a time. In addition, this becomes also a burden on the patient as they have to be accessible to us at all times. So last summer, Public Health entered into an innovative agreement with a company that developed an app that uses technology to accomplish this same result. It was fairly unknown at the time, but this new app allows a TB patient to monitor and record, records themselves taking the oral medication, and then they're able to submit that video electronically to public health. We then review the video, make sure it's in compliance, approve it, and then log the submittal. This technology significantly reduces the amount of time we spend on a daily basis, eliminates travel time, which can be extensive based on where the patient lives, and eliminates gas and vehicle wear. Since the patient can record themselves at convenient times and places for them, their compliance to the doctor's prescribed treatment has also improved. Initially, we asked our clients if they'd be willing to participate in the program and to use the technology and to opt in, but because this has been so successful and we've saved so much and compliance is high, we've actually now automatically just opted everybody in. We have had a few instances where clients don't have a smartphone. We've taken old cell phones that public health employees have turned in, and we have then repurposed them by locking them down, just installing that one app and the access to that app only, and then they're able to use those repurposed cell phones. So the results, since July when we started, we've enrolled 21 patients so far. We have saved more than 4,900 staff hours, saved almost 98,000 vehicle miles, and saved money in fuel, and more than 178,000 in salary and benefits, for a total of about 194,000. And the last comment is, the neat thing is, this is not one-time savings. This is ongoing every year, and we hope to expand on this each year. That concludes my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good for you. Any question, Supervisor Gleason?
Thanks, I don't take the labor too many things. Matt, do you think this would have happened without Lean Six Sigma?
Well, yes.
Or is it, or is Lean Six Sigma not, you know, the predicate, but maybe it is the predicate, but there's a culture change within your organization looking for ways to change and institutionalizing that attitude?
I think it's energized the process, Supervisor Gleason, and has allowed us to quantify it where we haven't before, but as we say, if we're not doing this on a daily basis already, then we shouldn't be in these positions. This is our obligation to find every opportunity to make things better. So I think it's helped.
So without Lean Six Sigma, you think we could have already, we'd done this without it?
I think we would have proceeded, but we would have not quantified the results and instilled the nature and offered the training to other employees to do the same.
How's the morale in your department?
Terrific. This is, a lot of this is driven internally.
Who's the person who discovered this process?
Boy, I have a team here of four individuals.
Who are they?
So Russ Hastings, who is our supervising public health nurse, Michelle Curioso, who is our director of that whole entire program, Shelby here is also in our children's medical services area, and then Chad is the guy that writes all these things up for us and gets them on the website. So this is a four-team process, but this is just one of the projects they've worked on.
Good job.
Way to go, guys.
Thank you.
We'll be next.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, up next will be from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Deputy Director Stacy Kuhura-Hara.
Good morning.
And her team.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Stacy Kuhura, Deputy Director with Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Our director couldn't be here today, he's at jury duty, so I'm making this presentation on his behalf. As introduced, I'm presenting the Kern BHRS Lean Six Sigma story. Joining me today are department's green belts. We've got Lynn Kors, Veronica Munoz, Connie Hansen, Ann Sherwood, David Livermore, Kelly Levig, and our department's black belt, Ben Rutherford. So we wanted to start by showing you how Lean Six Sigma has aided our department in our endeavors to ensure outstanding customer service. Kern BHRS has put the customer at the center of everything we do. You'll see this methodology has ensured we're improving the quality, increasing the quantity of services provided, and establishing a culture of lean throughout our department with our customers at the very center and as our focus. Kern BHRS is, oh, you know, I'm sorry, I haven't been moving my slides along. There we go. Essential. We started Lean Six Sigma in 2015. We've been using Lean Six Sigma for the past four years and really focusing on quality, quantity, and establishing the culture of Lean Six Sigma throughout our entire department. In our Lean Six Sigma presentation to the board, we were asked not just to present on projects and their outcomes, but to present how we've been developing the Lean Six Sigma culture at Kern BHRS. So how do you build a culture for a large county department? We focused on training. I have with me our Lean Six Sigma certified staff. We train all of our supervisors on the fundamentals, and we're orienting all of our new employees on Lean Six Sigma. We understand that you can't just train staff on the methodology and then walk away from it. It has to be embedded in our practice, it has to be used regularly, and it has to be supported through ongoing process. So we collect surveys to hear from the voice of our customers on a regular basis. We are encouraging our staff to share their ideas for innovation. We share the ideas that work across the department and promote their success. Our method for embedding the culture moves from the top down and the bottom up. It would be easy to say why we need Lean Six Sigma. Kern BHRS is growing across staff, contracts, and our budget. Our department has recognized how fundamental it is for us to grow efficiently. We are not a general fund department, and the regulations of our funding sources demand that as we increase quantity, we're also producing quality and not waste. Embedding Lean Six Sigma in our culture is ensuring that our growth is efficient, providing the quality and benefit of our customers who are at the center of our circle. The biggest impact of Lean Six Sigma at Kern BHRS hasn't been in the projects we're going to show you, but really has been in the culture of our growth. So we've focused on three types of projects for our department: quick wins, rapid improvement projects, and full Lean Six Sigma projects. We found that if we're growing well with this methodology at our foundation, we are now actually operating with a lean mentality and developing processes that don't even register as Lean Six. This is just part of our culture, and it's really just become the way we do things. We wanted to talk just very briefly about just types of waste that are identified in Lean Six Sigma. At the core of our efforts in order to increase the quantity of service delivery and ensure our quality, we really have been focused on places where we can reduce waste, and this is ensuring that we're keeping customer service at the cornerstone of everything we do. So we have completed various types of projects over the last four years. We've picked three, just three, of our completed projects, wanting to show you a quick win, a rapid improvement project, and one of our larger Lean Six projects. You'll notice each row shows the project type, and you'll see in what we have in our before and now columns, we've reduced waste in these processes to ensure the quality to our customers. For example, our substance use disorder project has really increased access and convenience to our customers. It's ensured that our service delivery provided is incredibly accessible and as efficient as possible. So moving forward, I'd like to compliment the board and the CAO for your support of Lean Six Sigma for our county. CSAC has provided an award to Kern County for its Lean Six Sigma efforts, and it is the intent of Kern BHRS to be a shining star for the county's efforts in Lean Six Sigma and to be a support to the county and all of our departments. That concludes my presentation. Myself and my staff are available if you have any questions.
I'm going to try to, Kuhura.
Kuhura.
Kuhura, thank you very much, Ms. Kuhura. Any other comments by any of your team? All of you are either green belts, black belts. Thank you very much for taking the time to do that and making the extra effort.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Love you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, guys. Public health staff left?
Yes, sir.
Well, we want to recognize them as well. Thank you, they did a great job. Jason?
Thank you to both of these departments to Supervisor Gleason's question. These are clearly two departments that are self-sufficient, didn't need a whole lot of nudging. In fact, Behavioral Health was an early adopter before the CAO even got on board, so, but what we are looking to do is make sure all employees have an opportunity, not just within these departments, but across the county, and these examples will help move that forward. So, and I'd also like to recognize Chief Witt. I know in the previous item, it was mentioned their efforts, and he's been a great example since he took the helm early February and moved their Launch Kern Lean Six Sigma efforts forward. So I'd like to thank him since he was kind enough to stick around for this presentation.
Thank you. The board does need to make a motion to receive and file.
I'd like to make the motion, but I got a question. How many black belts do we have now in Kern County? Do you know?
We have just the Behavioral Health and Recovery, Supervisor Gleason through the chair, just the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services black belt. We're at this point trying to get a reasonable percentage of green belts embedded in each department and identify which of those green belts are best suited to become black belts and master black belts to train their staff from within, but we're slowly but surely building up a green belt group that can be identified from there, what black belts will go on.
Okay, thanks. I'll make a motion on the presentation.
I'll make a second, Chairman, and say to Matt to stay on the cutting edge. Keeps you important, right, and moving the molecule, so we appreciate you.
Give a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. I think that takes us to item 42, which is also under Public Health. This is a hearing to consider repeal of the Kern County Uncodified Ordinance G-8767 and adopt a new uncodified ordinance establishing environmental health service and permit fees related to massage establishments. Morning, again.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. My comments are very brief. We were before your board on April 30th with a full presentation on the request to make some changes to the fees. This is the public hearing to do so. We are asking to reduce the annual operating fee of $1,600 that we established last summer down to $700, and then a one-time application fee of $375. These fees represent the actual cost of service it requires us to do to implement the ordinance, and with the actions we've taken over the last year, that is allowing us to bring forward these changes. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that would like to make a comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll return it to the board. The recommended action is to make a finding that this is not a project subject to the requirements of SEQA, but if determined, a project is exempt from further SEQA review pursuant to Section 15273 of the state SEQA guidelines, and repeal the uncodified ordinance, waive the reading, and enact the new ordinance.
Make a motion, and good job, Matt.
I'll second it. Mr. Chairman, could I interrupt real fast? The, just so I can point out, the sub-agenda has incorrect language. I'm not sure if that needs to be corrected. The board letter that attached, is attached is, the fiscal impact is wrong. The board letter references $2,700 is the actual decreased in revenue, and if, just so that we could reflect that.
Can we incorporate that into the motion to, it's in the board letter?
So we can, we can correct-
By reference to the board letter. Okay. Is that okay to include that in the motion?
We have to edit it.
Yes, your mo-
My letter's right.
Yeah, it is. So we have to go ahead and edit it, correct?
Do we have an editor, no?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the summary of proceedings will correct, will correctly reflect the fiscal impact line in the agenda language to state $2,700 estimated decreased annual revenue.
Okay.
That will be put in place.
Thank you. Motion, can we get a second?
I do.
That's right, Magg, your second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, that takes us to our closed session, but I think we have one item to add. I just need to read this into the record, correct? This is an item, would be item 56. This is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation in the opinion, excuse me, in the opinion of the board of supervisors on the advice of legal counsel based on the facts and circumstances that may result in litigation against the county but for, but which the county believes are not yet, were not yet known to the potential plaintiff or plaintiffs, which facts and circumstances need not be disclosed. So the motion you need is to consider closed session, item number 56, make a finding that the need to take action on a non-agenda item matter occurred after the agenda was posted on May 16, 2019. County officials learned of significant information, and such information warrants immediate consideration by the board. Need a motion to that effect?
So moved.
You have a motion in a second? Please cast your votes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
And now a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Yes, sir.
Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.